Kingston Zoning Board Appeals will now come to water at six o'clock. My name is Tony Hart Leavage and I will be chairing this proceeding. I will take a moment to explain how the zoning board appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and three alternates. We have been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston. We perform this service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. The other board members are as follows. Raise your hand if I call your name please. Joe Fitzgerald, Ryan Cafferty, John Monavita Goldman, and Cassandra Burke. The alternates that have been selected are Chris Larson, Mary Newbauer, and Owen Harvey, who has recused himself from this proceeding. There will be a period for public comment this evening. A sign up sheet is located on the voting room. This period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Individuals must address the board and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. This meeting is being taped for the record. With that being said, the zoning board of appeals of the city of Kingston is hereby convened in order to hear appeal by the Irish Cultural Center of a decision by the City of Kingston Historic Landmark Preservation Commission dated November 2nd, 2017, denying the Irish Cultural Center Preservation Notice of Action for proposed work at 32 of Beale Street, Kingston, New York. I would now like to recognize Dan Gardestine, Assistant City Corporation Counsel, who will match the comments prior to a century of public comment. Dan has disappeared. I don't know where Dan is.
Chasing after attorneys is my job.
Okay, Mr. Gardestine.
Okay, first there was some questions raised regarding the jurisdiction of this board to hear the appeal. In the decision which rendered by the Historic Landmark Preservation Commission, there was erroneous citation to section 495 of the city code. That was actually supposed to be section 405 of the city code. The question of jurisdiction is going to be raised in written submissions both by council for the ICC and I assume by council for the opponents of the project. That is a legal issue that will be addressed in writing by this board. There really is no reason for the public to comment with regard to jurisdiction as this board is going to make a determination based upon, you know, applicable case law citations by both attorneys and again, that is a legal issue. Also, just to clarify, certain emails have been received and have been distributed to all board members regarding notice requirements for variance requests, zoning change requests, and drawing an analogy between this appeal and those notice requirements. For clarification, this is not a variance request. This is not a zoning change request and therefore, the ordinance that is being cited is not relevant to this proceeding. This is a hearing of an appeal in public. This is not a public hearing. We have an appellant who has a right to present his appeal to this board. The appellant can call witnesses. No one else is a party to this appeal. The only individual who has a right to call witnesses would be the appellant. The board reserves the right to call witnesses on their own if they deem appropriate. That is a decision that will be made in due course after the appellant has had his opportunity to present his arguments. We have communicated both to the appellant and to other individuals that the board will receive written arguments and written, for want of a better term, amicus briefs regarding the issues that we are addressing. Those written submissions will be provided to the attorney for the ICC. As is the case in any appeal, the appellant does have the right to the final word and will have the right to answer any of those submissions. And I believe that addresses the procedural issues before we begin. We will have a public comment. I would ask that public comment that our chair has indicated be limited to three minutes so that we can get to what is a very difficult and potentially time consuming issue for this board and that issue that can be raised or submitted in writing, resubmitted in writing, there is no reason to read what will be submitted into the record. You can trust us that we will reveal anything that's submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Gardestine. Julie, would you give me the signed sheet, please? Well, I'm waiting for the signed sheet and will call attention to the three correspondents we received. One from Jake A. Myers in the Rondell. Second, a letter from Jay D. Lorenzo, Preservation Dean of New York State. And then a letter from the Law Offices of Warren L. Blansky for the record. Okay, well, we're going to need addresses, I'm sorry, indicated here, addresses for the speakers, so when you come to the microphone, if you would give your name and address and we'll try to write that down. Okay, Susan Piparada.
Hi, Susan Piparada. I live at 24 Huns Street in Rondell. I would like to ask you to support the HLPC decision and I'd like to call attention to a discussion regarding the appeals board that took place at the Comprehensive Plan Zoning Subcommittee meeting in April 2017. Thank you. Skip down to the bottom of page two where Assistant Equator Carla Neighbors is speaking. And I have the audio here.
You're saying there is a zoning board. There is a part. There is going to be a board. You're saying you want to see a zoning board. I'm saying lots of them saying that was one of the most suggestions that were made to be the most important thing is moving the HLPC slash heritage process to afford the land where he doesn't agree on. Except the most important is where they don't have to do anything for the whole experience, I think, of the HLPC that they're comfortable with. So it's not the situation we're talking about, you know, the current situation, so we can cut their minds while we're handling explorations. My opinion is they don't have the expertise that. That's why I have a passion because of the actual law is going to be. They're just going to be like, hey, so it's like, it's going to be very difficult. They're going to go back to the planning board and say, why don't you make a decision? And the explanation, you know, the whole, it's like, you know. Having about certain case posts, of course, with what last night, he was on the phone with the council. At least not at a, that's where it happens, but that's where appeals go. I love people who are discovering, but it's everything that people are prepared to understand. So many, this ZBAA is, that's the same vice decision, not, they don't like it. So they don't use the same vice decision because they're going to the board's not a lot of, you know. And that's before, before, these people, they are, they are establishing a deal's board to put matters of all the organizations to sit on to make a final decision as far as to create overall decision. I don't know if you understand, I just wanted to say something about the decision by everyone. I've covered it to every, my, 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 we have it. Okay. They don't think so.
Again, I ask you to please support the HLPC decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Hi, I'm Barbara Scott. I live at 66 Spruce Street in Rondell.
Spruce Street.
Spruce. And I'd like to quickly raise for the record a petition from the Rondell RT Responsability Board, which represents the Rondell neighbors. This petition has been signed by 189 people. Just to recap, on September 25th, 2017, the City of Kingston's Historic Landmark Preservation Commission denied the Irish Cultural Center application for 32 of Beale Street in Kingston. A preservation notice of action which is needed before a building permit can be obtained in the city's historic districts. After almost two hours of discussion and deliberation that evening, the Irish Cultural Center's lawyers asked commissioners again to summarize and explain the reasoning for their votes. HLPC commissioners cited concerns with the width of the building, the proposal's harmony with existing buildings, and the desired character of the neighborhood, relation of the proposed building to other buildings surrounding it, and proportion in how it fits in overall to the district. Commissioner Leslie Melman of HLPC, a college coordinator and academic technologist, said, "That's the crux of the problem. We've chosen the most difficult site, perhaps in the Rondell, to choose to build. Ultimately, I feel like this is a truly difficult site to try to build a mixed-use building that could tie into two neighborhoods successfully." Commissioner Alan Bear, an architect, said, "To like a lot of aspects, but to have to ultimately vote no is a very painful thing. We don't do this lightly, but our mandate is to look after this beloved historic district." And I know you guys can get it right, just keep trying to look at that proportional aspect. Rather than working with the commission to make necessary requests and changes to their proposed design, the Irish Cultural Center instead is appealing a decision to the City of Kingston's Zoning Board of Appeals. About the ICC's appeal to the ZBAA, the HLPC's Vice Chair, Marissa Marvelli, a historic preservation specialist, told the Kingston Freeman, "I strongly urge the ZBAA to consider the impacts project will have on the overall character of the Rondell West Strand Historic District. A big reason for why so many residents and visitors are attracted to the area in the first place is as is our responsibility, the Landmarks Commission carefully studied the proposed center's citing, scale, articulation, materiality, and appurtenances." And Marvelli again says, "The September decision came after months of review and deliberation. If the zoning board of appeals were to grant the applicant's request, it would undermine the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, a fellow City of Kingston regulatory commission. The Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission is empowered by the city and the state. Its existence is a condition of Kingston's certified local government status, so it is subject to the state and federal rules which qualifies the City of Kingston for grant money and eligibility, as well as certain status. The Zoning Board of Appeals is not the HLPC's ruling body. We respectfully request that the Zoning Board of Appeals support the diligent work of their colleagues at the city's Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission and respect the extensive knowledge and experience this commission has in evaluating the special considerations necessary for the protection of the City of Kingston's historic districts." And a few other points. Almost done. Okay, almost done. HLPC is uniquely qualified to evaluate a preservation notice of action, having expert members stipulated by the zoning codes. The HLPC spent months evaluating the project and my question, one of my questions is, what are the qualifications of the ZBAA members to override a carefully weighed decision? And also, a second question is, given that the HLPC has criteria mandated by state and federal agencies, are regularly evaluated by the state agencies to determine whether their decisions are in compliance, what are the criteria that the ZBAA would be using to evaluate the HLPC's decision? Thank you for your time and attention. Thank you. I also have copies of the petition.
Okay, thank you. Is that a June?
My name is Judith Emily. I live at 26 Avial Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the HLPC decision. Historic preservation is essential to the economic development and tourism of the Rondell neighborhood. The HLPC is made up of professionals in historic preservation, an historic preservation specialist, an architect, and a lawyer, to name just a few. The HLPC is experienced and uniquely qualified to make decisions on a proposal, a proposal's fit in historic district. The HLPC's criteria for considering proposals is dictated by state and federal guidelines and the HLPC is regularly reviewed by the New York State Parks and Recreation Department and by the U.S. Department of the Interior for consistency with the mandates and criteria. The appeals process is actually to go to the ZBAA for a hearing, a partnership, and then to an Article 78. The zoning codes don't allow the HLPC's decision to be overruled by a simple up-down vote by the ZBAA. The city's lawyer has said so himself at the Com Plan Zoning Subcommittee quote, "There is no appeals process for the HLPC. Undermining the HLPC by allowing a questionable appeals process to overrule their carefully weighed decision would threaten our historic commission and our city's certified local government status. The CLG status qualifies the City of Kingston for grant money." What the zoning codes allow on a parcel of land does not trump what is allowed in the historic district. We are not opponents. We are supporters of the HLPC. If the ZBAA supports the HLPC, the ICC is not dead. It just means that they would have to work with the HLPC on reducing scale, creating better proportions, and considering more carefully the citing of the project. The HLPC should be given the opportunity to defend its decision. Please support the HLPC. Thank you.
Excuse me, object to the speaker. This is an appropriate speaker. He's the former chair of ZBAA.
Would you want to hold it up?
Yes, sir, James. Let me respond. It's all to me. James Roden is a private citizen. He's no longer a member of the ZBAA. He has every right as a private citizen to come. He has no status as a board member of ZBAA currently.
Thank you, Chairman. And please, Mr. Porter, don't be threatened by that.
James, James, please.
No, I just need to respond.
Please, Chairman. Address all your old members that mentioned that. Thank you.
First, let me say that congratulations to all you have been selected. I wish you all well. You've been chosen to offer a service to the City of Kingston, its residents. I hope that you enjoy and have continued success in your decision making. Anthony, as a member formerly of you, congratulations and good luck, success.
Thank you.
Now, I would say that speaking from this side of the voting versus that side, it's a more intuitive. So now I understand how some people felt. Now, I've had, after years, sitting and listening to several years of comments on both sides. In the past, I've made comments that I felt that there should be some compromise. That hasn't happened. I think that this decision by the HLPC, which I went to the press after it was released publicly, not only in the chambers, but by the Freeman and the radio, I did say that I agree that the decision that the building was too large, I was in agreement. I want to stand clear on both parties, ICC and the people that are opposed to the size of the, I never took size on either side. I only agreed that the building was too large. Having said that, in Mr. Porter's correspondence dated November 22nd, 2017, he referred to section 495, which Mr. Gardestine so eloquently mentioned early on of the city code as basis to file appeal. Consequently, there is no code number 495 this week. So therefore, although maybe typographical, I think it's something to be considered as we go forward with the sleeping process. Also, on page two of the same document, the correspondence on the top first paragraph of page two, he refers to section 408-68 of the zoning code as his main argument to file for the appeal. Section 408-5-68 of the Charter, 405 zoning law, speaks to enforcement that work being done at a site is in compliance and conform with the requirements that the building permit was issued for. Nor would it have referred to filing and appeal. Should have been so therefore, he should have referenced the correct article in chapter 405 of the zoning section, 405-69 for appeals. That's where you would have found the correct information to file this appeal. The City of Kingston on March 3rd, 2017 approved a Article 405-55F. The amendment read that a sign must be posted on the applicant's property by building and safety, a law that Deputy Thomas Tiam, who represents the Building and Safety Department, introduced to the common council. That sign should be placed on said property 10 days prior to public hearing. That sign was not placed on property. I wrote by again as at latest two o'clock this afternoon to see if perhaps I had missed it. It is still not placed on property. Again, that's in deference to city law in zone, which your own director wrote for. So, with the aforementioned errors in the notice of appeal and the non-placement of the sign to make the public aware of the hearing, I suggest you, the ZBAA board, send this request back to council for further review and schedule a new hearing at a new date.
Chairman, you going to rewind the council?
I'm going, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I understand your name, Paul Long. I've sat next to her all the time.
I sat next to you.
In Mr. Porter's brief, a 27-page brief I might add, he mentions that the HLPC acts as a super sort of decision maker over the decision that had been rendered by HLPC. The HLPC must follow the guidelines of zoning and they didn't just decide alone that that was what they should do. If I can, this is from the HLPC. Commissioners duly, superated regarding the application in accordance with the Commissioners' duty to exercise judgment in accord with the basis of decisions stated herein and maintain the describable characteristics of landmark or landmark district. The proposed work will have a positive impact with regard to the relationship between the results of such work and the exterior architectural features of other buildings and nearby properties. The proposed work will have a positive impact with regard to the factors of aesthetic, historical, and architectural values and significance, architectural style, design, and rate. The proposed work will have a positive impact on the character of the aesthetic interest and the structures involved. Commissioners therefore found those items de grounds to not pass on. In the zoning code book, one second, sir.
Is this the final?
One more point, sir. The board has the authority to impose reasonable conditions and restrictions on the variance as long as they are directly related to the applicant's proposed use of the property. Said conditions shall be imposed for the purpose of minimizing any adverse impact the variance may have on surrounding property. And I will close with my final piece right here, Mr. Chairman. The board shall weigh the benefits to the applicant against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood if this variance is made. The board should consider whether a desirable change will occur in the character of the neighborhood or detrimental nearby properties will be created by granting the area requests, whether the benefits sought by applicant can be achieved by some other preferable method, whether the requested area variance is substantial, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood in this district, and finally, whether alleged difficulty was self-created which is relevant but shall not necessarily conclude the granting of the variance. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Jackie. Could you just give me your address so I can put it over?
Sir, my address is 9 Grove, G R O P East, Kingston. I am through the 8th Ward of Beale Street.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Deborah Breslin. I live at 105 Avial Street in Rondell. And I'm here to urge you to support the HLPC decision. I believe that they are uniquely qualified to make decisions on a proposal's fit in the historic district. And I'd like to play you an audio tape of a transcript, a distributing print, of the October 17th, 2017 Comprehensive Plan Zoning Subcommittee Forum on Consolidation of Historic Commissions.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So, I just urge you to support the HLPC decision and the proposed changes on the zoning code, which consolidates the two historic commissions, has not been ratified. Thus, the current language or the zoning board chairman's understanding of it is what needs to be noted here. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I live at 316 Spillway Road, West Carolina, New York. I was born and raised in Kingston, New York. Delegating members of the board. As the Historic Landmarks Preservation Committees are functioning, that falls under the City of Kingston zoning regulations, I thought I would give you my account of the HLPC vote that occurred September 25th regarding the application for a notice of action permit for the ICC. At the September 25th meeting, the commission voted four to three against issuing a notice of action permit for the ICC. The commission members were directed by their chairman to use the five criteria found in section 405-64, the zoning code. The commission found that the ICC project complied with four of the five review criteria standards. The one objection they stated was the project would negatively change or destroy the landmark district. This is hard to fathom, as I will try to explain. Following this vote, the chairman then asked each member a simple question. "Are you in favor of the project?" And the vote was four to three against, even though the project complied with four out of five of the zoning standards. When asked for their reasons why they voted against the project, three of the members cited size and scope, important, size and scope of the project. One member said she was not comfortable with the citing of a mixed-use operation at that location. However, it is important to note, this location had previously been approved for mixed use. So that begs the question, is it within the statutory authority given to the HLPC to approve or deny a project based solely on the dimensions of a building? None of the five, none of the five criteria standards mentioned size or scope of a project as a review standard. Yet size and scope were the reasons given by three dissenting members. Interestingly, there is a section of the zoning code which does discuss elements of size relative to the building itself. The proportions, ratios if you will, of the width and height of the facing wall, size of window openings, those types of things, relative to the building. But nowhere in the HLPC review standards does it mention size and scope of a project relative to the surrounding properties, buildings, residences, or businesses. Size and scope considerations are subject to review and approval by other city municipal offices, but not the HLPC. I believe the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission were acting outside their authority and mandate when three members used size and scope as the reasons for denying the notice of action permit. Furthermore, as ambiguous as the Kingston zoning code HLPC review standards are, one thing is very clear. Article 9, Landmarks Historical Commission, section 405-6381, legislative intent states the purpose for this commission is to provide for the promotion of, and this is important, the promotion of the educational, cultural, economic, and general welfare of the public. The Irish Cultural Center will be a shining example of this legislative intent. Education. The theater, Irish dance lessons, Irish pipes and drum lessons, the museum, the Irish language learning program will not only enhance the awareness of the Irish culture through educational instruction and programs, but will establish a base for understanding important contributions the Irish culture has given to society. Culture. There are some of you, and many of you in the community, who have lost loved ones and have found uplifting support of the Irish community at funerals, dedications, parades, and celebrations. Many community events, which have become familiar to us, the Sharon Rock Run, the St. Patrick State Parade, the Hooligan Hudson, the Summer Cross Country Run Series, the Irish football and hurling programs, all of which are planned for and carried out by the AOH demonstrates our commitment to strengthening the cultural fabric of this community. Economy. The events just mentioned attract Kingston tourists, patrons, county and state residents. This in turn helps tourism, restaurant, and local business operations. These events help to establish Kingston and Ulster County as a recreational destination. It paints the picture. This is a community open for business. These events help Kingston and Ulster County build a strong economy, find a general welfare. Our organization, the AOH, has established and supports programs for children in the community. Children are learning Irish dance and Irish pipe music, our AOH Pipe Day, inclusive of the children. Participants in ceremonies showing respect for fallen soldiers, funerals for lost loved ones, loyalty to the flag-drawn parades, lessons in honor, respect, and loyalty are hallmarks of these programs. Elementary, middle, and high school students from all over the county participate in the Summer Cross Country Running Program established by AOH. In short, the community general welfare is strengthened. I am asking you to consider the value this Irish Cultural Center contributed to the community. The project is not like the destruction of the old Grand Post Office, only to be replaced by a Jack-in-the-Box, or the leveling of large areas of old Rondell. The ICC will be a new building on an old vacant lot, designed to capture the pride of the Irish and the soul of Rondell. It is a new building meant to provide meaning for many future generations. You mustn't look at this through the narrow lens of those who can't see but for their own selfish needs and desires.
Okay, Brian, can you wrap that up, please?
Sure. And I recall speakers two and four had two and four in respect.
Here's my...
Okay. The center is needed to provide space for planning parades, marathons, summer programs, community service programs, and other such things. It is needed to provide safe places for Kingston to practice and store instruments to learn Irish language and learn dance. The Irish Cultural Center is necessary to provide a locus around which the county Irish population would feel pride. The character of the Rondell district has evolved over 300 years. In 1865, my great-grandfather migrated here from Ireland as one of the many ethnic groups that were here at the time. The Irish helped to make Kingston what it is today. It is my hope that you can approve this project and start a new chapter in the history of Kingston, recognizing the contributions the Irish community has provided. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Lynn Woods.
I would like to read a letter on behalf of the Preservation League of New York State. I have copies for each of you.
Could you just state your address, please?
43 Home Street. But I'm speaking both of them, reading the letter, and then I have very brief comments of my own, very brief. This letter is dated January 10, 2018, addressed to the Kingston Zoning Board of Appeals regarding appeal schedules for January 11, 2018, Irish Cultural Center in Kingston. Dear board members, On behalf of the Preservation League of New York State, I write regarding an appeal filed in response, the City of Kingston Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission denied the application for construction of the Irish Cultural Center as proposed on September 25, 2017. As you may know, the Preservation League is New York's statewide full-service preservation not-for-profit organization. We invest in people and projects that champion the essential role of preservation in community revitalization, sustainable economic growth, and the protection of our historic buildings and landscapes. We lead advocacy, economic development, and educational programs across the state. Thoughtful planning for historic districts like those in Kingston does not prevent development. Rather, it encourages applicants to work with the Landmarks Commission to propose design features that complement the existing character of these districts. We believe that the Historic Landmark Commission can and should have the ability to enforce such goals. The City of Kingston Historic Landmarks Commission stated intent is to quote, "Ensure that the distinctive landmarks and landmark L districts shall not be injuriously affected," and that's section 405-63A, the zoning code. Further, 405-63B, 2A, provides that site design shall be considered by the commission regarding new construction, in which it shall be compatible with the district in which it's located," and that's in quotes, that last part. During the commission's review, criteria numbers 1 through 4, admitting number 5 for lack of relevancy, of 405-64B were considered, including the effect of the proposed work within the landmark district, the relationship between that work and neighboring improvements, factors of aesthetic and architectural style arrangement, as well as the character and interest that structure adds to an area. Additionally, the commission considered the application as required on such points, including but not limited to, quote, "establishing relationships to the external features of buildings and the immediate neighborhood, the relationship between the width to height of the front elevation, the rhythm of spacing of buildings and building elements on the street, and the effect on existing or historically significant spaces," and that's 405-64C. The case of Historic Landmark Preservation Commission appears to have operated within their purview when denying the applicant a preservation notice of action based upon the considerations made by the committee members as supported by the majority vote. Committee members noted that they were uncomfortable with the proposed project, one reason being due to the size, scale, and the design. The committee members appear to have functioned within the guidelines for evaluation as to the appropriateness of the proposed construction within the historic district. We urge the Zoning Board of Appeals to uphold the Historic Landmarks Commission's decision to deny the applicant a preservation notice of action based upon the design submitted and considered by members of the commission. Thank you for your consideration. Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, J. Dave D. Lorenzo, President. And I just wanted to mention that I support the comments of previous speakers regarding the integrity and capacity of the Historic Preservation Landmarks Commission. And I also want to say that their carefully considered decision was reinforced by other organizations. You may recall that the Ulster County Planning Board weighed in, and the letter from them also had a problem with the scale, and I quote very quickly, this is from the Ulster County Planning Board letter that was dated, I forget on this, I think it was last spring, my desk steward was the director. And he had said, "The proposed Irish Cultural Center is located in a highly sensitive area of the city, and it includes historic district, local waterfront revitalization area, the national heritage area. The site, far from being tucked away, occupies a prominent place in the fabric of the West Strand. It's placed in a long company hill path," not West Strand, I might note, "is visibility from T. R. Vella Park and the public promenade. Round and round."
Excuse me, I have to answer this. This is a document that's already been before the...
It's my comment.
It's, they're raising issues that are not...
It's part of my comment.
Sir, please, you're interrupting speakers. I respectfully ask you not to do that. It is my role to monitor the speakers. Please do not do that again.
And I'm just writing a quick excerpt.
We need like one more.
But I'm trying to make a point.
Well, we need, I gave you a lot of attitude, you ran...
Well, I read this letter, and I'm a cop of myself.
Okay, I don't want to have to cut you off, please. One more point.
I just want to point out that this letter is noting the importance of that site, the fact it's the historic district. And that letter also cites the New York State Office of Parks Recreation Historic Preservation, that they can also weigh in on this. And in their letter dated September 30, 2016, the letter noted, quote, "The scale is very large in comparison to surrounding commercial residential buildings," and they express concerns in that letter regarding it is...
Okay, I think I'm going to cut you off now.
But I just want to make another...
I'll cut you off now. We have six, seven more speakers.
I didn't get my three minutes.
You have more than three minutes.
I read the letter, I'm counting someone else.
Please sit down.
Okay, so I'm, sorry about that. All right, the zoning board of appeals. Oh, sorry. Tanya Garment, 102 Worth Street, resident of Rondell. 102 Worth Street. And I'm not an opponent of the ICC Center. I'm here to support the comments, the HLPC. So the Zoning Board of Appeals has, I believe, never, anyone's ever read that I've spoken to, and there hasn't been any examples found of the Zoning Board of Appeals ruling on an appeal from the HLPC. This would be a precedent. The HLPC has zoning code that the applicants were aware of before they met with the HLPC, and the HLPC acted within their code. Sorry, one sec. The HLPC decision was based on standards set forth in their code, and, oh, I'm so sorry, I just want to make sure that I make this point, that it's based, they're, what they're reviewing is based on form, not use. So the value of the ICC Center to the neighborhood in terms of its use is irrelevant. The ICC, the HLPC is reviewing the form of the building, and that is what they are talking about when they say how it adds to the neighborhood. People are in a neighborhood, it's not, it's a new building, but it is in a historically landmarked neighborhood. And that neighborhood is a place where people go and they see how, they are able to notice the older buildings. The older buildings are not overshadowed by the newer buildings. The newer buildings should be of their time. They should be modern buildings, but they shouldn't be overshadowing and taking away from the historic buildings. That is what the HLPC is seeing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Harvey, at 102 Appeal Street.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so I noticed in, thank you so much for hearing our comments. I noticed in the appeals application that the BOA, the Brownfield Opportunity Area, was again referenced, and I wanted to submit this letter from Perkins and Well. They are the consultants on the BOA, and they explained to the planning board, when it was under their review, that the way that the ICC lawyer is speaking about the BOA and using it as a justification for, as like a preapproval or vetting of the project.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Gordon, I didn't recognize you. Start, I may finish. I didn't recognize you as the attorney. Mr. Gardenstein has informed me, counseled me, that I must allow you to bear your objection, and I will. And I'm sorry previously, but I thought you were another audience member.
Um, additionally, I noticed in the lawyer's submission, exhibit I is minutes from the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission meeting from August 3rd. I wanted to let you know that in the September 14th, HLPC needed, those minutes were corrected. I don't know why they're still online or available to applicants, because they were found to be incorrectly, the vote on that meeting was found to be incorrectly recorded, and it was corrected. The minutes were adopted with corrections. I need to also submit that to the board for your consideration. Sorry. Um, and then I also just wanted to reiterate, we are not opponents. We are supporters of the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission, and it's notable that the Historic Landmarks Preservation Commission is not here to defend their decision as would any other, um, power, power of body. They are not a body in that way, and I think that's notable. I also wanted to just make comments on, I missed his name, but the supporter of the ICC. There's another section of the code which pertains, I don't have to tell you guys, I'm sure you know. There's another section of the code which pertains to the HLPC, which is Section 264, which laid out the set of criteria that the HLPC was working with. But the members at that September decision meeting did say that their overall vote was based on the way that, their impressions of how the new construction would fall and fit into the historic character of the neighborhood. And you can actually watch that video. Clark recorded the entire thing. And if you watch the last, the fourth video of it, you can see the decision yourself. Um, I also just wanted to say that Linda Mackey sent me an email. She's of the State's for our preservation office, and it was dated December 7th. She said she recommended sharing a copy of the preservation law. It's basically the roadmap for the city and historic commission to follow when reviewing projects. Typically after a historic commission denies an application, the next step is for the applicant to file a hardship application. This should be outlined in the city's preservation law. The applicant can work within the law to make the case that there are no other alternatives to the proposal, and it must proceed as submitted. The applicant would have to make their case, meet the criteria listed in the preservation law, and the commission would approve or deny hardship. If the commission decides no hardship exists, then the applicant can appeal. The law will designate the appeals body.
Okay, so Hillary, would you want to add something?
Um, I just have a couple of other points. She, she also-
Just add one more point, please.
Okay, so I'm going to submit my written comments, since I don't have enough time to read them to you. But I also wanted to let you know, just for the record, and I hope that you're, that you're recording this for the record, or, because I noticed there's no stenographer.
It's recording.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I also spoke with David Banks and John Renault of the U.S. Department of the Interior National Park Service, and they explained that the federal government gives historic preservation guidelines to the states, and then the states pass those guidelines along to municipalities. There's some flexibility in the local laws. But they did say that it's not allowed for a, a local appeals process to be more permissive than what's outlined in the state regulations and the model law. And it could be argued that an appeals process to a zoning board, which can overturn a historic commission, could undermine the historic commission's mandates. Historic commission is regularly reviewed, and, um, so it was found that its decisions were continually, or if there was a precedent, that its decisions could be overturned. It would undermine the commission, and then upon review, it could, like, our certified local government status at risk. So I had to submit my comments to the chairman.
Deanna Bowden.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Bowden, of 42 Appeal Street. I'm here in support of the HLPC. This proposal is clearly out of scale with surrounding buildings. Moreover, the right to appeal does not appear to comply with the provisions of City Code. It was confirmed by a commissioner of the HLPC that the appeals process was added to the HLPC's letter by the HLPC secretary and the building department. Um, I'd like to read a lead queue with copies of our letters, I'm sorry, of letters from our attorney, Lord Markaski. There, I don't see, over here, one is, this one went to the HLPC. It writes, "I'm writing to the commission because the notice of the right to appeal included in the decision does not appear to comply with provision of Article 9 of the City Code. The decision states, 'No, apart that pursuant to Section 81-A of General City Law and Section 495 of the City of Houston Code, appeal from the decision. Can you take it to the case that board of appeals within 60 days of filing of the order with the city clerk? A reading of Section 9 of the City Code indicates that upon the file of denial of the preservation notice by the commission, the applicant has two appellate remedies. The applicant may institute the hardship application procedure pursuant to Section 405-66 of Code with the commission. In the event that the commission denies the hardship application, the applicant may then make application to the City of Kingston ZVA to review the denial of the hardship application pursuant to Section 405-66. This appeal is not a denial of appeal of the original determination of the Landmark Commission. It is an appeal for the denial of the hardship application. The jurisdiction of the ZVA would then be to determine that the denial of a hardship application should be upheld, modified, or reversed. Two, the applicant or any person aggrieved by the commission's action may also file an appeal of the commission's action by bringing a proceeding in accord of competent jurisdiction pursuant to Article 78 of the Civil Practice Law. On the grounds that this decision and the commission is illegal in whole or in part. There is nothing in Article 9 of the City Code or in-
Deanna, if you're reading that letter for the board's purposes, we have a copy of that, and we are aware of the contents of it.
Okay, I'd like for it to be a part of the record, though.
Well, it's, it is part of the record. It's part of our record. I have five, so.
Okay, I have two of these three letters here. We have both of them. One was addressed to you. There's a second one for the HLPC. I have copies of these, if you'll.
Would you get that to Rebecca? Rebecca Martin.
Hello, Rebecca Martin, West Jefferson Street in Kingston. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Um, just want to clarify the component of process. Here tonight, and I was looking through the HLPC section of the City of Kingston's code, and I had a question to pose to the zoning board, but also to the City of Kingston. The observation that I made was a question in, uh, the appeal, Section 405-69 of the Legislative Code, that states, it's short, a little too short, that any person aggrieved by an action of the commission in disapproving or limiting a preservation notice of action, application, and the zoning board's support of such commission action may bring proceeding to review in the manner provided by Article 78, et cetera. So, to me, that means that the HLPC is charged to interpret criteria in the laws that are mandated by the state when proposals are in front of them. The ZVA is charged in-